Anything else?
We need a horn.
You have a gavel. I was kidding, I'm sorry. I'm not kidding.
Melissa, would you call the roll?
Mike, if you have a gavel, use the gavel. Roger.
Melissa, call the roll, please.
Yes, Ginger Riddle.
Present.
Janette Lee Holdman.
Here.
Brian Payne. Jerry Geese.
Here.
Nancy McDougal.
Here.
Mike Swasso.
Here.
We have a quorum. Five is a quorum. The first item on the agenda is to accept the minutes of May 21st meeting. Have all the coordinators, planning commissioners, uh, reviewed the minutes and have any comments or want your approval?
Uh, I would move that we approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion second to approve the minutes. Uh, Melissa, please roll the call the roll.
Ginger Riddle?
Yes.
Janette Lee Holdman?
Yes.
Uh, Jerry Geese?
Yes.
Nancy McDougal?
Yes.
Mike Swasso?
Yes.
The next item of business is site plan case 2025 Development 007 Fairlane Townhouse Homes Phase Two. The applicant proposes to construct 21 homes to be built out on Lot One of Fairlane Town Home Subdivision. The homes will consist of six townhomes and two duplexes with unit size space in the duplexes of 600 square feet and the townhomes of 1,110 square feet. Josh, you want to put it on the board and, um, we'll open questions from the board? Or does the staff have anything to add before we discuss it?
Staff has nothing to add.
I'll, I will ask the applicant though to give us anything that you want to say before we start discussion. Please give us your name.
Jeremy Greenemeyer, Greenemeyer Rentals. So I assume you've all been through the, the packet that was submitted by our, by our engineer and staff. Uh, there's a couple of things to mention. It's, if anyone is driven by this project, which was built about three years ago, what we're proposing is roughly the exact same floor plans with the exception of two smaller units. We, uh, there was some desire for, um, everything we built in phase one was bedrooms upstairs. There was some desire for some ground floor living, so we converted two of the, two of the 21 units into just a single story so that we could accommodate those folks. Um, those are the ones in, I would say the, the, there you go. Thank you. Those two units. Uh, aside from that, we're using the exact same floor plan, the same interior, the same finishes. I did send Josh a couple of pictures of the exterior and interiors of the existing ones. And we're, I mean, the good thing about, what we're proposing is you can actually go out and drive by and walk through what, uh, what we're planning to build.
Are the one-story ones, are they just one bedroom?
Yeah, one bedroom, one bed, one bath.
Is it not age restricted?
Nope, nope. These are all market rate housing.
Can, just out of curiosity, can you tell us what the rent is in the ones that are already there?
Yeah, the existing ones are, uh, 1350. Correct.
Board members have any questions?
No, I don't.
Mike, is the, how is the drainage handled? Is there, is there, isn't there a ditch behind it or something?
Yeah, the, uh, the drainage for this was, uh, all, all part of included in a kind of a regional detention that, that they're utilizing. Yep. And we're going to tie into the existing storm sewer system there and utilize some, there was some over detention that was built into the area behind IHOP.
What is the little Christmas tree shaped light bulb thing? Uh, what is, what, I can't read it. What's on that right there?
That, that's a cause. So the hotel has their retention pond just above that. So that is our, that is the outlet of the retention pond from the hotels.
That's where you capture it?
That's where we capture it and have to take it underground and get it into the, uh, storm sewer system. Is that correct, Mike?
That is correct.
Thank you.
This is not a public hearing, but if anybody in the audience is here tonight to speak on this and if you have something brief to say, I will entertain it. So our action tonight is to approve, disapprove, or continue. Oh, we, we don't have to approve the staff report, do we?
No.
What's your pleasure, everybody?
Make the motion that we approve this.
I'll second it.
I'll move point of information. Uh, do you want to approve with conditions or without conditions?
Conditions as, as you've put on this, on the map?
Yep.
Yeah.
With conditions, yes.
I'll second it.
Let's call the roll.
Ginger Riddle?
Yes.
Janette Lee Holdman?
Yes.
Jerry Geese?
Yes.
Nancy McDougal?
Yes.
Mike Swasso?
Yes.
Missed one.
Oh, Brian Payne?
Yes.
That's Ryan. He's back again.
The next item on the agenda is a preliminary plat for Monroe Manor. Uh, it is a preliminary plat for 45 acres located, oh gosh, north of Holiday Drive, south of Fairway State Subdivision, north of whatever that other subdivision is.
Woodland Hills.
We'll show you on the map. You all know where it is. It's, the proposal is for 194 single family lots. Uh, the developer is proposing to build it out in three phases. I think the first phase is off of De Soto. Uh, and they, you should note that they are to be 40-foot lots with an average lot size of 6,578 square feet. Uh, you'll recall that the city recently changed its zoning ordinance to, uh, allow in R2 lots as small as 40 feet wide and 6,000 square feet. I don't care the size.
The main quick, quick math is not my strong suit, but thankfully I know Google. And so 6,000 divided by 40 is, sorry, 6,000, 150.
The parcels are shown on the map on the wall. Um, I will point out to you that the parcel on the, on the right side is currently zoned R2P, which is a planned unit and cannot be approved without a rezoning or a public hearing on the existing zone. So tonight we'll be looking at this and we can ask questions and we can field questions. And we can approve conditionally or we could approve just that part that's west of the trail because that is zone R2. And I would, does the staff have anything else to add?
Yeah, so, uh, to kind of piggyback onto what Mr. Geese just said there. Uh, this was approached, uh, the developers here, they, they can speak on this, but, uh, we presented the, the plats, um, and they, we went through the pre-application process, um, they submitted it before you. I would recommend can, a conditional approval, uh, with the condition of changing the zoning. Cause right now what it says is R2P, which would sometimes be considered, uh, just a, a type of R2, our normal zoning district. Um, but it is its own separate, uh, it's related, but it is completely separate. Um, so the plan as such does not meet with that plan that was, um, approved by, uh, this body in 2018. So we will continue with this plat tonight. Again, I would suggest a conditional approval of the, the entire preliminary plat on the condition that the property west of Winslow Trail, east of Winslow Trail, apologies, uh, would be rezoned at a later date. The developer is, uh, open to that, um, and we can, we can move forward with it.
Part of the reason for an R2P is that it gives the developer flexibility, but it also gives the community flexibility. In an R2P, the developer has to give you some concepts of what he's building and there's some negotiation back and forth. If we, we zone it to R2, all that, uh, all that will, you'll have control.
That, no control is not correct.
What you meant, okay, the mistake. You, uh, when we're approving a subdivision in the city and we're going to, you know, approve this in some fashion, I'm sure. We set the rules. If a person has a piece of property that's zoned and he wants to develop it like it's zoned and he follows the rules as they are, then there's really no course to reject that. You can still ask questions, but he has, he has some rights to, to use it the way we say. And you'll remember that we did change it to 40-foot lots, so that's, he's taking advantage of that. The hang up in this case is, does he go for rezoning or does he go through a public hearing and, uh, talk with his neighbors, I guess, or whatever? I will point out.
Clear as mud yet?
Let me point out to the audience also that that part that's south of Fairway is laid out similar to, very, pretty similar to the way it was originally proposed by Carolyn Hackman when she owned all that property. Fairway Estates was going to be larger and it was going to include this. The layout is pretty darn close. It was going to run Pebble Beach through it, connect the roads. The original approval, of course, wasn't at this density because at that time the zoning ordinance didn't allow it.
But the plan that was submitted was, was 50, 50 foot. So, um, it was submitted.
Original order, Mike Greenemeyer's?
Riley. I don't think Greenemeyer, I don't think Greenemeyer ever had this property. In 2018, there was a plan approved, uh, and it was 50-foot plot width. Um, I have it sitting on, well, not my desk, but in the office.
Some were bigger, some were smaller. And that, that was allowed by the P U D.
We have, uh, the city has undertaken a couple of actions to allow smaller lots in the, in the city. So they've submitted this, this preliminary plan, their plat, in order to take advantage of that and, uh, develop at that, at that level. So, uh, at the end of the day, um, uh, this was something that staff needed, uh, to get corrected. Jerry was helpful in this, um, and, uh, if you read, so what, we have a couple of conditions. I would add one condition to that. I, I gave that to you in writing, just so you could see it in writing. But, uh, we can get to that point when we get there. Does that, Jerry and I have talked a lot. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I do have a question.
Do you have questions?
Let's, let's open it up to debate.
Can I ask one question first?
You can ask all you want.
So the, the subdivisions to the south of that?
Yes.
What size are those lots?
Uh, they are R2. So they're, they are zoned R2. So from, uh, we have, um, to the north, to the immediate north is, no, that's not what I wanted. To the immediate north is, uh, R4, which is actually a multifamily designation. So somebody could, could take those lots, compile a couple and build an apartment complex.
Not, not with the HOA they couldn't.
Still zoned R4.
Well, my question is, the, the existing lots they have?
Yeah.
What are the dimensions of the, most of those lots? What is the?
To the south there, you mean?
Yeah.
Probably 50 foot.
50 foot, because they were before they changed.
Way bigger than 60. 60. Which is 60.7. 60.7, according to. According to the G I S O C N, they vary because there's a lot of cul-de-sacs. But I, I see some as small as 60 and 60.7 is prevalent along Holiday Drive. So my assumption is if it's at 60.7, then it's a 60-foot. Whatever the R2 would allow, yeah.
Is, is the developer present?
The developer is present and here to speak, so.
I might point out that I think the developer was doing subdivisions, but not building the houses. So if you have questions about the houses, I don't think he can answer them, but.
And also, we're not here to ask questions about the houses. Where, where, where they can be put, we're on the property, but.
Give us your name.
Hello, I'm Roman Hahn. I'm the owner of Circle H Land Development. We're, um, proposing this development here, Monroe Manor. And I think to take it back and like, how did, how did we get here with two different zonings in the same? It's, it's basically when we bought the land from Mike Riley, it was, I believe, three separate parcels that were, that were bunched together. That different zonings, we thought, leading up till.
Yesterday.
Yesterday, um, and confirming with the, with the city that we were told they were all R2. And I think there was actually a, a commit, uh, a public hearing or a planning commission meeting, um, a few months back that was talking about, okay, if they're 40, we need to talk about what the setbacks are going to be on the lots. And so from that, I think there were assumptions from the economic development team here, as they shared with us, it's like, we're, these are all R2, we're good, we've got the setbacks arranged because we had a public hearing to do that. And so we're, we're set until, I think, yesterday, um, whenever we got the notification that, hey, we think there's some zoning on the, on the backside of this, that, that we need to have some further discussions with. But to take it back to, oh, why did, why do we, why are we doing 40-foot lots? Why are we trying to rezone to 40-foot lots? And this, from very beginning, we've been having conversations with Lansing long before we owned the land. Did, on, you know, what's the needs of, of the community? And oddly enough, at the time, the, the city had already paid for a third-party marketing study that I think is about 70 pages long and basically highlights everything from what people do here, what their ages are, how large their families are, what their occupations are, what living, how, what conditions they live in, whether it's multifamily, you know, $500,000 home, like, and so what was clearly noted in the third-party market study and why we are proposing this type of, of subdivision is the massive gap in the housing offering in Lansing is clearly stated. If you go back and review the, the market study, it's very much in this price range. There is larger homes that, you know, in the upper 500s and up type of thing. There's some multifamily available, limited, but some. And then outside of that, people don't live here. They work here and live somewhere else because they don't have an opportunity to live here. And so that's what the market study said, is people would live here, they would contribute to the community, but they can't because of the housing situation. And so as a way to address that, we, you, you make the lots of standard sizes generally 50. Whenever you're building, you know, uh, these types of homes, whether it's, you know, it's hard to say out loud, but starter homes at 300 or 350,000, but that's unfortunately where, where it's at. But when you're building homes like that, most of those are on 50-foot. But if you're trying to get to where the sweet spot is in that market, marketing study, it says they need 300 or sub $300,000 homes. And so to get there, you can't have 60-foot lots. You can't really even have 50. You have to start to look for ways to get higher density so you can keep the pricing down. Now, that cost, when we developed the lots and pass them along to the home builder, is, is what ultimately determines the price to the consumer. And so that's why we're doing this. We don't go do 40-foot lots everywhere. We look at what the market conditions are in a given community and this is what the market conditions said for us to do. Um, so that's how we got to, to this. We, to, to answer your question on the, the home builder, we've, we've secured a home builder and in fact, many people in this room have toured some of the home builders' homes so they could see.
So you're saying that, back up just a second.
Sure.
You're saying that the savings is passed on to the buyer?
The savings, yes. And that's how these homes will be offered at. No, this is not Rous Coleman. Hakes Brothers will be the builder of these homes. Um, and you can go look, they've got multiple communities in Kansas City. Uh, they build a really nice home. Um, and we, as we said, we took many sitting in here today to go visit these so they could get more comfortable with what this subdivision was going to look like. And so, yeah, we've, home builder is selected there. They happen to be, Hakes Brothers happens to be a business in Lansing also. And so they have their office, their Kansas City office is in Lansing. And it's a, it's a, one of the things that we've attempted to do with reaching out to, whether it's Country Club Blank Bank and talking to them about giving them the opportunity to finance this, uh, project with us. It's reaching out to the, the businesses like Hakes, it's local, and also people that are in the actual excavation business, making contact with them. So we give the local community opportunities, the local community opportunities to actually participate in this, to deliver a product to the community that the community needs, which was, um, clearly indicated in the marketing study. But to answer your question directly, yes, it's, we, the price of the lot is less that we sell to the home builder for them to build their home on, which allows them to pass that on and keep the pricing of the same home that they're building elsewhere would be $50,000 more.
Well, the reason I ask for Rous Coleman, because that's not the case with them. They're charging everybody as much as they, where they aren't subsidized.
We're not partners with Rous Coleman.
Any other questions from the developers? Because I have one about the engineering.
We actually have our engineer here as well, so.
Ginger, it looked like you had a, had a question.
Well, I don't know if this is the right time to ask it, but I guess one of the things that I noticed on a, another map that came later in the document is that some of these existing homes would have like four or five homes behind their lot, um, under this plan. And I just wondered, it doesn't seem like there's much of a buffer or anything between them. And that, I mean, that's a lot of houses to look out your deck and look in their back windows, you know what I mean?
So what we also need to recognize is that as we are applying the regulations as written, we get to, uh, enjoy the fact that we all get to own property. The preliminary plat here has a tract, um, uh, that runs from, tract B runs from here through here. And I think that Jerry might have a question about that. But there, that provides a, a buffer that would not necessarily be, that is not necessarily required by the regulations, but that does provide a buffer in between property lines. That we could be consider.
It's hard to tell how.
To be considered.
Doesn't look very wide. How wide is it? There's one that's five.
They've got to have tree lines. That's all right, you've got to have tree lines.
So, um, Ben, do you have a, an answer on, uh, the, the?
I'm Ben Gasper with SMH Consultants. Uh, we're the engineer and surveyor that put this plan together. People were asking about the buffer. Uh, in general, we've tried to add at least a 10-foot buffer to buffer the yards away from existing properties. This would to help keep existing trees. Our goal is to maintain as many tree lines and trees in the areas possible, uh, and mostly just remove the trees that would be in the ways of the right-of-way in the lots and try to keep those buffers between, um, all the residences on the side. That is 10, 10 feet shown right now.
Josh, move over to the, uh, to the east side. Is that, is there, is there a buffer there too? I, I can't tell because my map is so small.
This, the east side or the west side?
To the east side.
Oh, I see, I can't. Yes, the other east, thanks. Yes, yeah.
But not on the, on the east side itself, there, there's not.
Correct. But there is a track that runs through the middle there.
Right-of-way or something?
That's an excellent question.
I think it's, Mike, isn't that an old right-of-way?
Let me, uh, call over to G I S O.
And then there's none, there's none on the Fairway Estate side, I assume. I can see them there. And that's my question and my comments. I think that, that tract B, I can hardly read this, as the, uh, is proposed to be part of the HOA. And I think.
Which HOA?
Their HOA.
Their, their.
Oh, their own.
Because they have open space. I guess they'll have to have one.
You will have.
So it would be, I, there's, way back when Riley was looking at this, I'd suggested that maybe we could extend the trail all the way up to De Soto. And I think, of course, 10 feet wouldn't be wide enough, but, but I, and I, and also 10 feet is typically in the Midwest, as far as I know, we don't take a subdivision and put a buffer around it. Who takes care of the buffer? Maybe parts of the country they do, but I don't know. But an HOA, how is an HOA going to maintain a 10-foot buffer? I think if, if it's a logical place for a trail, then they should dedicate some room for a trail. If it's, if the park department or the city commission, the city council doesn't want a trail or doesn't think it would work, then make it part of the lots, but put an easement back there, a tree easement, a preservation easement or something. Because those lots are fairly deep and they could, you know, they, and at least then that land would be taken, would be under the responsibility of, of somebody. I'm telling you, no HOAs in the Gulf, I can take care of it. And those people on the other side that are here tonight are going to complain because they're, they're looking at something that's not being.
They would be complaining to their HOA.
To their HOA, the new HOA.
It's not valuable to think they're going to do it.
And also, the tract A, which then also includes a little buffer on that side, if that property ever were to develop, the same thing would occur. Now, maybe all that acreage is put in there so they can meet their park, open space requirement. But it'd be my opinion, it'd be better to waive that than to create problems for a future HOA. Now, the tract A, the triangle part, which ride on the trail, would make a good little neighborhood park or neighborhood swing sets or whatever. The other, on the other end, uh, that tract, that triangle tract called B, which includes that strip, you can't even, the homeowners wouldn't even be able to get to it. So it should be included in lots or something. It's that, it's just, it's an impractical piece of property with a 10-foot path to get to. I just think it's poor plan, poor design of the subdivision and that it's easily resolved. I don't know if anybody agrees with me.
Planning commissioners would.
Wait, wait, I'll open it up.
Until we, uh, the chair can open up, uh, the floor to, to ask some questions, um, and maybe answer them. So, um, planning commissioners, based off of what the chairman just said, uh, do you have any thoughts on, on that? Because if we do, we need to kind of hammer out if that's going to be a condition of approval. A slight redesign, um, of, of that, taking away the buffer.
Well, I think the 10-foot buffer is just a waste. It needs to either be more or none because the HOA can't take care of a 10-foot buffer. There's not enough, not enough room.
There's trees in the way.
Yeah.
Well, the trail, the, the right-of-way, the, the existing trail.
The north, south.
Is 40 feet wide.
Yes.
I don't know if they can afford to give a 40 feet back there and make.
So the reg, regulations require a minimum of 20 foot.
For a trail?
For a trail. Um, that, but that does come into, um, whether or not there is a desire.
Exactly.
Right.
On the front of parks departments to add a trail on top of a new pool, uh, among other things. Have not been able to have that conversation with Jason, um, but that would be a conversation to have potentially with him. We can do that, but.
There's a lot of concern too, about having trails in your backyard. People don't care for that.
About that as well. However, Winslow Trail has been there for a while.
We found that not to be the case.
So some people have concerns. Um, a lot of people here tonight are fans of Winslow Trail as it exists currently and it runs through some of their backyards. Right? So kind of depends, right? I'm in a similar situation. I live on a trail and it's nice. A little bit weird sometimes, but it's generally nice, you know? So, uh, but to address, do we need to do anything else to address, uh, the chairman's, uh, suggestions there? Is there desire on the planning commission to?
I think that's a waste as it is and needs to be included with those lots.
So some of, some of the design is due to topography. Um, we can talk about what's on. We're all aware of what, what.
Creek down here.
The, the creek, um, the dip, whatever you want to call it, there on, on track B to the immediate east of De Soto, right? So clearly that needs to be there. They're not going to try to put a house there. Where am I going? I'm going here. Uh, and then we were talking about tract D here.
Yes. I mean, if I'll, I can address some of these issues. You know, if need be, we're happy to add a buffer in a 20-foot zone for tree preservation or something. That is something that could easily be incorporated. As far as tract D goes, um, this is just a preliminary plat. We're not done in final plating. So when final plat does come, that is everything, that, you know, that's something that we can address at that point to either provide a larger cul-de-sac or larger lots in that area to get rid of tract D. You know, again, this is all just preliminary plating that we've preliminary laid this out, this will work. And then once we get to final plating, there may be small minor tweaks to some of these. Uh, another thing to consider with the trail is we are, you know, connecting the two properties. And so we will be having sidewalk that would eventually connect to this trail that would take it all the way to De Soto Road rather than having a separate other trail over there, which was considered. And then we will have through that tract A, there's an opportunity there that we could put a neighborhood park or something in that, in that triangle. And we will have a little sidewalk connection from the, from the neighborhood over to that trail over there as well. So it can help provide some access from both sides of the.
Well, that's right on the trail, so that makes sense. I don't think anybody objects to that. And the areas that would be monuments, I don't see that we would object to that. And the area that's drainage, I don't think there's any problem with that. It's those little strips that need to be addressed, I think. And, and I think we have to ask the city commission and the city coun, city council and the park department. What do you think? And make our decision based on that or leave it up to them.
Correct. We, we can do that. We can also, um, instead of having, uh, parkland dedicated, we can also accept payment in lieu of.
Right.
And so that, that is an option as well, so that the developer would contribute $400 per u, unit uh, to, uh, to the parks department essentially for maintenance and the construction or, construction or maintenance of existing, newer existing parks within the city.
With those modifications, will they not meet the park requirement?
Um, no, I believe that, uh, that if tract A is utilized as, as somewhat of a neighborhood park in some way, is, that is, I'll use a technical or, or jargony term, activated or utilized in some way, uh, that instead of just open space, that. way, that instead of just open space, that would, that would meet. The, the trail existing here already helps that, that case, obviously. And then, if we look at the percentages, oh, I did not do the percentages. Oh, they're there. Tract area, so that's not lots, right? So, everything not lot. That's 19 percent. Regulations require for an R2 subdivision require the dedication of 12 percent of the land to be open space, right?
I think you could make the argument that if they gave a 20-foot preservation buffer or whatever easement, that certainly the community is, is advantaged by having trees in the community. And so, that could count towards meeting this need for parks.
Yeah. I would, I would, that's a fair argument.
The 10-foot that is stripped there, it probably ought to be a little wider than that. But.
That is something to consider.
Yeah. I think that's a better idea.
So, if we approve it, maybe.
So, you're looking at, you're looking at doing a 20-foot.
Maybe an easement. A tree, a preservation easement.
A preservation easement.
Instead of.
The 20 feet would add to the, it'd be the lot, the owner of the lot.
Yeah. But get rid of that 10-foot.
Yep.
Unless, unless the parks department or somebody else suggests that there should be a trail in there, then we could, you know, address that at the time before next month. But the sidewalk itself is what, six or 10 feet or what is it?
Eight or 10 on, on the trail.
On the trail or the sidewalks?
In front of the homes.
Five feet.
Five.
I think they're five feet.
Yep.
Five, okay.
Yep.
But that would, well, I think the trail is eight or 10 feet.
Yeah, it's usually.
And that certainly would get a 20-foot easement.
Yeah, that would, that would work well. I can definitely hope for that.
And, and I think, again, on, on the north side, there's no property in there that we're trying to buffer. And I think we should get rid of that 10-foot strip. Does everybody kind of agree with that?
Where?
Up, up, up here. Well, Josh, right, right there.
Oh.
So, so what you're, yeah. So, what you're saying is.
Well, there's some houses there.
Oh, yeah, there's a couple.
Yeah.
But they're, they have huge lawns.
Existing here on the, on, so, the legs on tract A would go away, the legs on tract B would go away, same thing for.
The leg that goes down and makes the trail wider, I don't care. That's not a big deal.
That's also already existing, pre-existing city right-of-way. So, that is, that's obvious. So, yeah, tract A here, that the triangle piece would, would obviously, yes. But the legs going east or west and then south.
The one south, that's a fair if it stays or goes because the trail's there and it is having a extra wide lake on the trail, saving a few more trees. It's not a big deal.
There.
Does the board have?
Yeah, I can, I can.
That fits within, all of this conversation fits within regulations, the system of your.
Makes it a better subdivision. Well, my concern was, the subdivision that I live in has an HOA and it has a little pocket triangle like that. That's nothing but a maintenance problem. People that back up, don't want to do anything. It can't be used as open space. No one goes back there to picnic. And it was designed that way because it was become part of an additional space in this plat, which never happened. So, it cuts it off and it's useless.
Right.
And I'm just thinking in terms of future HOAs and what makes sense for the city, you know, whether they complain to the HOA or to the city, somebody's going to hear a complaint that there's a dead tree back there.
Yes, you're, you're correct. We will hear the complaint.
So, I guess it's just one question, I guess, as part of, if we add, if we extend the lots, remove the buffer and add a 20-foot buffer easement or tree easement, that easement would count towards the 12 percent green space.
Well, you'd have to ask the city council that, but I bet they, they would agree. And they may decide they want a trail there.
I'd be curious to know what that actually does if it keeps it above the 12 percent?
Yeah, I know if, you know, we also remove the tract D over there as well, we're getting limited.
Getting close to that, to that number.
But we would be having that buffer where essentially it will be green space because we can't, we're not removing any trees in that area.
Yeah, just leave them there.
Well, how, how hard and fast is the, the park thing? I don't think, we've approved this eight years, six years that I've been on the planning commission. I don't remember once any developer ever paying into that fee.
That apparently is correct.
So, we're not, we got a couple council members, commission council members in the audience. They're not nodding their heads, but I, I think that's something you just have to ask. I mean, I would think the planning commissioner would support that concept, wouldn't we?
So, I'm also looking at the regulations, 302, well, let me just pull it up. It just makes this easier for everybody. So, while I'm trying to find this, I'm going to try to type, can you try it? Section 3.02, open civic space systems. In paragraph, or in section B, paragraph three, reductions in deviation at the discretion of the planning commission and/or governing, governing body, the requirements may deviate from the criteria of this section, A, doesn't arrive in this planned development process, or B, to the point where any lesser percentage of open space will clearly meet both the service area and level of service targets. And then, C, for any application that dedicates open space to the public in a tight location and design center that is acceptable to meet the general public needs. So, based off of my reading of that, you guys have the power to approve a reduction, even if it dips below the 12 percent, if the tree preservation easement is there. So, we would note that with a condition that clearly state the planning commission allows a reduction under 12 percent provided the preservation easement exists.
That would be part of our motion that we remember.
I'm writing, I'm writing.
Okay. At this time, I'll open the public to public questions, remembering this is not a public hearing. And so, we don't have to allow you to speak. So, I want you to be as brief as possible, try to state its subject. Now, remember that the western half of this, there, there will never be a public hearing on that. We can approve that tonight. And they meet the regulations and the tweaks things that we did, I'm pretty sure that we're supportive of that. And they, and the other half, there's going to be an opportunity, I'm going to guess, in, at the next meeting will be a public hearing. I don't think they want to wait longer than that. So, that will be a public hearing. And if you're within 200 feet, you'll be notified and you come and speak for sure. And, but if you have anything briefly you want to say tonight, we can't make a fine decision on that part anyway, but I'll, I'll let you, we'll, we'll let you, we'll let you speak. I think Howard, do you want to start? And please give us your name and maybe.
Name and address, please.
And your address. We're supposed to have, keep your address.
Jeff Howard, 814 Highview Court.
Live just south of Holiday.
One question, I think, did everyone, I just want to make sure I understood correctly, that concern that I think most people have on the walkway. So, there will be, the walkway will be maintained. There will be a buffer zone and existing trees in the buffer will continue. You're not going to chop everything down and just grass it in. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Because those of us who use the walkway kind of enjoy the shade when it's 100 degrees out.
Our, our discussions have been around enhancing the walkway and not taking anything away from it.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
People got to live and cities got to grow.
I like walkways. So, I appreciate the question. Thank you.
My question is about the trail as well.
Name and address, please.
Oh, Brenna Roads, 677 Hillside Court. So, I did extensive research into this project two years ago when it was rezoned. I was told by the city that the city does own 40 feet of space along the trail, which is shown in the map. If you zoom it in, I mean, I have a picture on my phone that anything that is not yellow here is city-owned. So, my question is, what, where would the buffer zone start? Does it start where the city owns property or would it be beyond that zone?
With the current configuration, I don't believe that the trail was labeled or placed on the plat. But we, we would not be changing the right-of-way. So, the existing right-of-way and the existing location of the trail would be the exact same.
Okay. That, that 40 feet along the trail?
Yep.
So, then if we're talking about a 20-foot buffer zone, is that in addition to what the city owns?
Yeah, that would be in a different location, though there is a buffer to the west on that. Part of the problem, I wish I could tell you that the, the trail is dead center and, and it's, and it's just not. So, because it meanders a bit, some places will have 30 feet, other places will have 10.
Sure.
And so, I, right now, I can't tell you exactly what, what that means for a buffer zone on either side of that.
Yeah. I would.
I know that's probably not.
I would beg of you all to keep as many trees as possible. My home is right in front of the trail. And I can tell you, just in looking out my windows, dozens of people a day on that trail enjoying it. And that's whether it's 100 degrees out or the dead of winter. It's crazy how many people are on it every single day. And I'm enjoying it with my little kiddos, like loving it. So, that means more to us than anything. There's already a road that is supposed to be cutting right over the trail and eliminating a lot of those trees. And that's hard as it is. So, please, as much as you can, preserve this trail. Because the city has acknowledged to me personally that the city of Lansing has a huge lack of green spaces and has admitted to that. And so, I would really, really think it's in the city's best interest to maintain the ones that we actually do have. In addition to that, a huge concern that myself and a lot of the people in our neighborhood have is that traffic on especially DeSoto Road is terrible. Trying to get out of our neighborhood as it is, especially if we are turning left out of the neighborhood, is incredibly difficult, especially at peak hours during the school year and the morning and the afternoon. I sat at that stop sign trying to turn for a very, very long time. If we are adding almost 200 single-family houses with probably about two cars per house right up the street, also trying to turn onto DeSoto Road, that is probably 400 cars that are, we are adding. As it is, I really feel like we need a better solution to just our exit out of our neighborhood, whether that's a traffic light or roundabout or whatever. It's, it's that difficult. So, adding 400 more cars on the same exact street is beyond my comprehension. I know that there has been a traffic report already done, but just from a personal testimony, it is very difficult. And then, you know, also the exit that's going to be on Eisenhower Road, that's a super difficult turn as well. So, I can't fathom 400 more cars about being right there in addition. So, that's my tidbit.
Do I comment to them?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I think they're, they're good points. And I don't want to not comment to them. But actually, one of the, the comment, the conversations that we've been having over the last several weeks as we've started to finalize this preliminary plat, specific around, we knew that the walking trail was important to the community. We heard that from the very beginning. We heard it from Josh. We heard it from the people in the neighborhoods. And so, we've made a conscious effort to focus on, and you heard earlier, like, hey, we want to build a park along it. It's enhanced the, this walking trail, but never to remove any of the trees there. And in fact, the, many of our conversations are on what trees can we save, not just to the walking trail, but even along these borders. And most of the conversation was about tonight, was around, let's figure out, and Ben's working on it right now, literally, I'm supposed to have it by tomorrow, I think, is the overlay of, okay, this is what the overlay looks like with the preliminary plat as it relates to where the locations of the trees are. So, we don't just, I know, you see many developers have just clean sweep everything regardless of where it's at. That is not our intention nor what we will do. And so, we're overlaying our, the, the plan that gets, the preliminary plat that gets approved over the top and literally will be keeping trees along that north and south and along that, and the walkway. And then, as you've talked about, DeSoto Road, that's, will be buried, not even really touched up there because there's, you know, it's real rugged and the topography is really rough there. So, we don't intend to do really anything there but to leave it in its natural state on the front along DeSoto there with the one entry coming in. And so, that, to address your trees, I, I'm with you on the trees. And so, we're, we're doing everything we can. And our goal is to have the north and south boundaries with the trees remaining and along the, the front and the back of the, of the development as well and the, and the walking trail. So, we are focused on that. And so, I'm glad you brought it up because you gave me an opportunity at least to explain to you what our plan is. With regards to the traffic study, you've probably seen, it sounds like you've done some research here. We, we did do a third-party traffic study and we'll be following the recommendations of that. One of the things to consider is, even though you're adding 200 more homes there, which is likely 400 cars, as you were saying, you're also adding other alternatives for people to travel outside of that area as well. And so, they're not, everybody is not going to go out, Deborah, drive onto DeSoto. Those will be now connecting, you know, Pebble Beach and, and then the backside will also have some entrances as well. So, we'll also be providing alternatives to, not just people that live there, but for all people that are, that are driving there. So, just something to consider. And I know that's something that was considered as the traffic study was done as well. Thanks for your questions.
Before, I, I'd like to interject also before we go on, because one of the things we didn't talk about was storm range. And at least on the parcel, the parcel that's on the, on the east side, that there's a dry detention pond proposed area that will trap water from the subdivision that would be going into Fairway Estates Pond. And so, what happens is no more water, it, it, it reduces the water, it stores it, and only lets it out at the speed that it normally comes out on a non-storm event. So, that would mean, in my opinion, that there is no impact on Fairway Estates. And therefore, if they did not ask to join the Fairway Estates Association, which has either good or bad sides to it, they wouldn't be required to because they're not impacting the subdivision in terms of stormwater. And I don't, I'm going to guess they have no intention of joining anyway. So, just.
Not at this point.
Because that was one of my concerns all along, if, if it impacts our lake, which just doesn't have enough capacity than it was originally designed, although it was done by the same developer. So, I think that, that question is answered. The other thing is, of course, some of that water also flows in the other direction. It all doesn't come our direction. And I'm assuming Mike has addressed how they're going to handle storm water in the other direction.
Yeah, we, we do have a full hydrology report and engineers here.
And you gave us 100 pages that we're not going to read.
There are hydrographs, though, that, that, you know, it's, it's basically supporting our commission. It has a very good executive summary.
Yeah. And I mean, I'll say, yeah, we put a dry detention pond there so that will not provide any excess peak flow rates to that, to that lake or pond more than the, what's already going there. There was also some studies that were completed in 1998, I think, in years past, when that pond was, or years after that pond was completed, that it was undersized. And so, some of those recommendations are taking some of that water and avoiding the pond and taking it east to existing infrastructure, which is also what we're doing for the east half of that. Essentially, phase three of, of this project is we're all taking it east to existing infrastructure and avoiding the pond. So, we're taking all the, the past studies in consideration as well.
What happened is when Carol Haskins built our subdivision and she put that pond in, it was supposed to be big enough, but later it was determined that it wasn't big enough. It's big enough for what's there for us, but it's not big enough to expand, to have additional property to be developed. Okay.
Hello, I'm Cassie Collins at 547 Creekside Court. And I just, I mean, I feel like the message has been relayed, but obviously, the tree's super important as far as the walking path and for the city as a whole. So, I just want to reiterate, like, I, even if they do add this buffer to the path, as a citizen, I would really like to see as many tree lines preserved or left in the development plan as possible. So, just wanted to give my two cents and that's it. Thank you.
I would, I would add also that the developers seem extra generous because we don't have a requirement that you don't let the trees down. This person owns this property and it's owned and he has a right to build. We can't, as communities say, you can't build there because you're going to add more traffic. And we built on our side, you know, so he has a right to use this land as we regulate it. And, and we don't have a rule that can have reserved trees. We are a free city, but, and, and so we can ask. And in this case, we said yes, we would for them. But thank you for the comments.
Just to, like, care it not stick. I'd like to incentivize not, yeah. So, that's all. Thank you.
Excellent points. Yeah.
Anybody else? I want to kind of wrap this up. Go ahead and let's.
No, I will preface this.
Please.
You come up to.
Please, you can come up.
Can you come up, Mike? And then name an address, please.
My name is Millie Heim, and I'm from 810 Highview Court. And I will preface this with, I love Lansing, and I love it, because it's a small community. When everyone says, we have to grow, we have to grow, I don't necessarily agree with you. And the thing is, what I'm worried about is, this is all going to be in Ward Four, correct? Okay, what's the, does anybody here know what the present population of Ward Four is?
Mike does.
I could say that when, every ten years, the United States does a census, and they provide that information to us, and every ten years, we redistrict. Have you noticed when we, in 2020?
Well, no, it was after I was here, since 20...
Yeah, but 2020 is when they did their census. We got that information, I believe in 2022 or 2021.
Twenty-two.
We redistrict. So what will happen is, in 2030, we will get another report from the U.S. Census Bureau, and we will redraw our...
Well, would you say that we have approximately, like, two thousand people living in Ward Four?
We have four...
Or more than that? Pardon?
About a fourth of the city.
Of the city.
And there's eleven thousand, so it's probably twenty-eight hundred people or so.
Okay. And you're talking about an increase with a hundred ninety homes, what would the population increase by?
We won't know, but approximately...
Has anybody made that?
Six or seventy percent is what I had estimated, for the whole city.
No, I'm just talking about that.
Okay.
The hundred ninety-four.
So the average household size in Kansas is two point two people. Let's be generous, say two point two-five.
Okay, so we're talking about at least four hundred more people.
We'll go two point six. Two point six, hundred ninety-four homes, five hundred people.
Okay.
Round numbers, five.
Yeah, five hundred people. Well, I'm thinking about things like the congestion in the schools. How are we going to deal with that? The other thing, can the fire department support this?
The fire department has been a part of the review. They have signed off on this, and this will be a normal process for them.
How wide are the streets going to be in that subdivision? Are they going to be as wide as the ones are presently in Lansing?
They are.
Or in our division?
We have standards for that.
Yeah.
You have standards for that? Because I'm just looking at front lots and the size of the lots. And I think about, when people, you're talking about smaller homes, which is great. People need smaller homes. People need to downsize. But the thing is, the lot sizes are so small, and if you have two cars to a family, where do you park? How do you park? How much congestion is going down the road? The kids, where will be the recreation places for the kids? They won't be able to play in the streets. They won't, I mean, they can play in their backyards, but I'm looking at some of these lots, and there isn't that much. And I really am concerned about the congestion. And I hope, I know you guys have been working on this a long time, and I just came to this meeting when I found out what was going on. But I am concerned about the increase in population. And I also was concerned when I saw some of the maps, because the first time it came out, the subdivision was a lot smaller, lots were a lot bigger, the population was less. And now we are looking at subdivisions which are going to be more crowded, a lot more crowded. And so I needed to be here to make sure that something didn't just fly through, where I'm assuming it was going to be those bigger lots, and now it's smaller lots. But that's what I have to say today.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I have a quick question. Are we not using Kane at all with this subdivision?
Did you get into it?
Yes. Well, the very end of it is, there's a house being built, right on the very end of it.
Kane Drive is, there's a parcel between, there are two parcels. If you, if you look at the map right here, it's, well, let's just pull up the map. Kane Drive's here. This is the northernmost.
I see it's too far away then, isn't it, to utilize that, really?
Unless, Jeanette, you're proposing to utilize the right of way of the Winslow Trail as a roadway, and then we could put a road down.
I'm sure that will go down really well.
It was your idea. It's your idea.
Your suggestion, I'm the listener.
Richard Faulkner, 244-90171 Street. My concern is about the schools. I am a taxpayer for the ever-increasing amount of taxes I'm paying for the Lansing School District. There's a possibility we're going to have two to four hundred students added to the district that they've been wrapped into this.
They have not, and gently, I would push back on the two to four hundred number.
No, for two hundred classes, small for starting families. Starting families have kids, okay?
True, but if you look at us, if you look at Lansing, and if you look at Kansas as a whole, two point six people per household.
Okay, we're not including western Kansas, which is unoccupied territory.
Lansing, Lansing, two point six, two point seven. You're also going to see a lot of downsizers. It's already been mentioned. You're going to see a lot of downsizers.
But you're not asking my question. Have you coordinated with the Lansing School District about a huge increase possibly in the number of students?
This has not been, as a part of the development process, we do not bring in the school district for plots like this.
Okay, as a taxpayer, that concerns me.
Well, you'll almost have to change the law then, because we, there was concern about the forty-foot lots. Well, we had a public hearing and changed it, and no one showed up. You might bring that up with your decision.
Oh, I wish we would have known. You know, if we would have known, and I do hope that people are punished for that the next election cycle, but...
The planning commission has to follow the regulations. The regulations doesn't require that the school be notified of a subdivision.
Wait until the superintendent says, oh, I got all these students. That's what you're going to do, and then you're going to increase our taxes. That's what you're going to do.
I mean, let's face it. I mean, majority of the, the majority of the revenue in this county is based upon single-family homes. The property tax is what keeps this going. And by decreasing that, you guys have made a lot of cash. That cash will not flow back into the school department. It'll go back to the taxpayers. We're going to have to pick up that mill levy to make more schools for this unforecasted number of students.
I'm not following, but these people are going to pay taxes.
Yes, yes. They're going to pay taxes. We make, we make a lot more houses, which the county then bases most of the revenue on.
So your suggestion is that the city should stop development because the schools don't like it?
I guess I'm suggesting that, that there is, I agree with the young lady over here, that sometimes enough is enough.
Well, isn't that a question to ask the school board?
Well, I'm asking you. I mean, you're the guys who said we can go a smaller number of plots. More plots, more houses, more tax revenue. That doesn't seem to be affecting the residents of the county, nor necessarily the town. And then, and then, oh, believe me, as long as we do this, this value-based taxing, the poor people of Kansas are deeply, truly screwed. But that's a different thing. But it seems to me that unless you've been wrapping the school board in here, you're hiding the cost of this and the quality of life for the people in the community. That there's still going to be a price to be paid for this when we open up all these extra houses. That's not going to be filled by you, and not going to be filled by the city. It's going to be filled by the taxpayers, who are already heavily under the thumb of the mill levy.
But this adds new taxpayers.
Yes, absolutely. Tell the school board what they're doing, so that at least they're prepared if they've got two hundred to four hundred more students.
That's a reasonable request.
Yes, I think it is. Thank you.
It's not a requirement, but it's a...
It's not a requirement. Sue you at the voting place.
We have engaged with, it's not required, but we have engaged. It's not required, but we have engaged with the local, you know, school board and city councilman on, hey, what does this look like for schools? The clear...
And the folks who are going to be purchasing these houses are likely going to be the teachers that are working in those schools, is my impression, because it's fairly early...
We do think that that's, it's a great opportunity for teachers and others that work in the other businesses here. I'm sorry?
The housing study that we did, the city did, says that you have to have an income of a hundred thousand dollars to afford a three hundred thousand dollar house. So unless the school teachers are coming with equity, or their parents are giving them...
They're both, they're both, it's, it's...
It's too late.
It's either, it's either going to provide an opportunity for people that are already living here or want, or working here and would like to live here, or provide people that are living elsewhere that now are going to create more business, businesses, because you actually are growing your population. And that's the thing, if you go through the math of the whole thing, which I think is where the team up here was trying to go, is this development, when finalized in 2027, is going to generate over one and a half million dollars of property taxes alone. And not to mention, every school child that comes in here that's new, which is one point two per household is what the average is, so let's say it's two hundred that we had, that's fifteen people per grade.
Aren't you asking for an RHID? How are we going to get this property tax?
I'm sorry?
Aren't you requesting RHID?
Jerry, we're going to table that conversation, because that...
Well, he's alleging that we're going to get this property tax. I think that's a legitimate question.
It's not something that's on the table for right now.
No, so you're not going to apply for that? So we would be getting...
We are, we are working through the numbers now with the, with the local economic team to see if it's worthy of submitting for or not. But it is some, it is something that we've talked about, is what would be the, and the reason why I know these numbers as well as I do is because we've been going through these numbers to understand what they look like and whether RHID is a potential option here.
So if it's not RHID, then we give a million and a half.
Even, but the RH, even if you do an RHID, you still get a million and a half in perpetuity just from the taxes. And that's not to mention the, the sales tax that they're going to spend in town, the new businesses that are created, the new talent you can bring to town to work at your new businesses. So there's a lot of other elements that you can't capture and quantify now. But what we can quantify is we know the value of the homes, and we know what they'll pay in sale, in property taxes.
But this is how this works in the county, okay? You build the houses, the county does the comps. They, our board has got a system laid out...
That's the way it works in every county, but yeah.
Our comps go up. So when you say, we're going to make this much money, somebody's making that money, and it's built upon the backs of the property tax.
That's, that's pretty standard.
Because they've done over fourteen percent increase...
Every, pretty much every U.S. city's comps have done the same thing. It's not unique here.
Not all the cities use, use the value assessed, real property value.
That's a discussion for...
I can only answer the part of, but there's a, beyond an impact of what's it going to cost the community, it's actually what is this going to contribute? And the money that's allocated per new student that gets to go to the school district to educate that student is also something that has to be considered.
And to reiterate, you've contacted the school, and you've talked to them and brought them all in on it, right?
We've, we've worked with the, with some city councilmen that are engaged with it. We didn't go directly to them, but we've worked through them to speak with the...
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Unless it's real germane, go ahead, quickly.
Kathy Glovehill, A17 Highview Court. My husband and I are substitute teachers in the schools. In every school we go in, there's like twenty-eight, twenty-eight to thirty children in each room. If the school doesn't know they need extra chairs, right now, some of the rooms don't even have extra chairs. The kids have, have to bring in chairs from other classrooms, run and get other chairs.
Thank you for your comments. But that's really beyond, we're not talking about schools. We can't, I mean, if the schools want to object, they have to do that. I mean...
We just want to know that there's going to be support for the schools, okay? Because we're in there every day. We're in the schools every single day.
Support in which way?
Yes.
You mean like tax dollars?
No. Well, of course, we're taxpayers.
I mean, what do you mean, support?
We're in there when the teachers are sick, and they need a substitute teacher. My husband and I are in there every single day. So, by the way, if you want to be a sub, they're desperate for them. All right? So, thank you. Just make sure you have enough open to students.
I'm going to close it so that no more audience participation, which is not a public hearing. And you're certainly welcome to come back next month. If there isn't, that the best I have is pretty sure I'm going to be one of them. You intend to fly me. So that's our next leg, we need those in the, of next month. I have no idea.
The twentieth. Let me, let me verify that. I believe that our schedule says the twentieth of August.
I'm a thief.
Twentieth, twentieth of August. So, yep. Thank you for the comments. They've been heard, and we appreciate you guys being interested in the community. And we will take that into consideration moving forward.
So any other comments or questions from the planning commission? Does anybody want to make a motion, a partial motion, half approved, or conditionally approved, or...
If you want, if you want to, if you want to, conditions...
Take into consideration the...
I guess, what did you capture? Let's put it that way.
Okay, so let's, let's, thank you. Excellent question. We have here two conditions. Some of this is already being addressed. And again, this is a preliminary plat. This is not final. Development cannot begin on the property in terms of building or getting, receiving building permits before the final plats are approved by this body, the right-of-way dedication accepted by the city council, and then the document reported with the county register of deeds. So, saying that, there are, there is ability for us to, within the guidelines by the regulations, we can put conditions like this one with the, the street tree, number two. We have a street tree, both planning, well, mainly spearheaded by Public Works and Wastewater. The city had a couple of comments about the location of some of the street trees, because they were on top of sewer lines or storm sewer lines. Not best practices, but we can work through where those are going to be placed later, at a later point, right? So we have a condition for that. What I would propose would be another two conditions. Three, the applicant shall obtain approval from the governing body for a zoning map amendment to rezone the subject property from R2P, Planned Unit District, or District to R2, two-family residential, to ensure consistency with the proposed subdivision layout and applicable zoning standards. No permits for public infrastructure or building. Construction shall be issued on the R2P-zoned land, the currently R2P-zoned land, until the rezoning is adopted and effected. That would be condition number three. Condition number four that I'd be proposing would be to add a twenty-foot tree preservation, adjust the property lines to add a twenty-foot tree preservation easement where deemed appropriate by the planning commission, and that leaves it open for this entire conversation to be added into that, and city staff, as your representative, to make sure that, based on what we heard here, what we discussed here, we may do this.
And the parks department and the city council will have an opportunity to weigh in on that before we meet. I mean, if, if we want a trail.
Yep. So, the, so condition number four, I rambled a little bit, so let me clean that up. Condition number four, a twenty-foot tree preservation easement would be added along property lines in order to address the concerns by the planning commission of the layout of the, of the plats. And the planning commission will accept a potential less than twenty percent open space with, as long as the tree preservation easement keeps that planned, it keeps that up.
Somewhat. Yeah, right.
Sorry, accept less than twelve percent open space. Thank you, Mike.
R2 is not two-family, isn't it? R2 one-family?
Conditional use duplexes, yes.
But what do we actually call it?
We call it...
Okay.
Single unit residential district.
Single family.
Where it says R2 two-family in this...
That's not what the zoning ordinance says.
Yes, sorry. My apologies. Yeah, R2, R2, single unit residential district.
Two families are allowed.
Thank you.
Okay, does everybody kind of agree with those amendments?
Yeah.
Are you willing to make a motion to approve it with those amendments?
I'm ready to make an motion to approve it with all of Josh's wonderful amendments, and I would vote to approve it.
Motion, second. Any comments on the motion? If not, motion will be total.
All right, Ginger Riddle?
Yes.
Jeanette Levine-Holdeman?
Yes.
Brian Payne?
Yes.
Jerry Geese?
Jerry Geese?
Yes.
Nancy McDougal?
Yes.
Max Wazzo?
Yes.
I have one other comment on this subdivision before we go to the next subject.
Okay.
A couple, actually.
I wasn't here.
The developer, I believe, is going to develop this three phases.
Yeah.
We'll see a final plat, only on part of the east, the western side. I don't think he's gonna final plat the whole thing, because he's not gonna wanna build all the streets.
No, at once.
So when it comes back for finals, we won't even be on that side, and then some of those, if there is additional concerns, whatever, they can do that at that time. I, I would assume that within a few months, we may see a final plat on the first 40 lots or 50 lots.
Yep.
Because they have to bond all their improvements and stuff, and then do the whole thing at one time.
Right.
That's my only comment.
Excellent comment. Thank you for the clarification.
Any, are there any additional comments from the commission, about, planning commission, about other, other subjects?
I have just one question. Is Leadbetter named after the golfer? Because his name is spelled with an A.
No, it's actually a family name.
Okay, just wondering.
This Leadbetter's in Lebanon County.
Mm-hmm, just curious.
It's not a family or something.
I, you're gonna be out in a couple months, because I have a couple. We're, the city council has proposed the adoption of the new comprehensive plan. I think either the wording that we've done, we've accomplished all our goals, or it's crappy and need a new one, but I think we'll be heavily involved in that. So we'll be thinking about, you know, our direction, where we wanna go, and I don't know, you gonna go out for bids in a couple months?
I don't wanna go on record with this, but September, October, I'm working on an RFP right now, so for your certification here, and, and the residents, when best practices for a comprehensive plan, due to the cost involved in it and the very open and transparent, public-facing nature of it, we will be putting this out for a proposal, right? I will write, staff will write, the city will write a document that says, hey, this is what we want in a comprehensive plan, and we want, in terms of, in terms of the length of time, the budget, then the amount of engagement of the public, that type of thing. So we'll put that out, and we will see who bids on it. There are a number of good firms within the Kansas City Metro that I would look forward to working with, but also, I'm hoping that we get some, some national interest, actually. And so we will put that out, probably September, October timeframe. I would like to get that started as quickly as possible within 2026. That'll be a budget cycle for 2026. I would like to keep it within 12 months. Sometimes they can stretch out to 18 months. Larger cities, much, much longer than that, but for us, I think 12 months is a good, a good range, a good, good goal. But yes, you guys will be involved in that.
One of the things about any comprehensive plan is that, or any comprehensive plan, is that there's generally significant community input.
Yes.
Tests and, and surveys and so forth. So if, if you're concerned about the future of your community and the way it should grow and so forth, stay tuned, because you may wanna volunteer for some of those subcommittees and reviews and stuff. That'd be a very good opportunity to have public input.
It'd be a fantastic opportunity.
The other comment I wanna make is that we did receive tonight, as part of our packet, an RHID proposal for the Greenham area property.
Yes, we did.
That was a report-
Two, you, so, yeah.
We did, okay, for the Riverside.
So this was, this was a follow-up on, on an email that was sent out to you guys. But yes, so Kansas state law requires that when the county, or city council is going to hear a public hearing, to hold a public hearing in order to potentially adopt an RHID, that you, among the school district and the county, our county commissioners, are also notified. So that was sent out to you via email, and I wanted to put that in public record in the packets tonight, so you received that. You're not taking any action on that, but you guys should be aware.
That's my point. My point is that if the state law requires us to be notified, it would seem to me that we ought to give some input. I mean, we are the, the planning commissioners who are not elected, not paid, but are, are the go-between, between the city of staff and, and elected officials in the community. We're supposed to be providing input in the community. So I think it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be un, it wouldn't be wrong, I don't think, if we had, if we could, if we did wanna make input. And I wouldn't even mind having a study session on the whole concept, if everybody else wants to, but that's just my opinion. Additionally, I, I need to correct, it was said, I think, I read the 11, the Lansing Housing Need Study, and I think, I never saw the word that we need units. It said that we want units. And it was based upon the fact that there hadn't been many houses built in the last few years. Before that, we were building like 30 houses a year. So for the next few years, we want 30 a year, plus another 30 to make up for those that didn't get built.